Good evening.
Good evening.
The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for January the 7th, 2020. That's a tough one. Don't say 1920. It's now in session. Happy New Year to each of you and thanks for coming out to our first meeting of January, our first meeting in January of this year, of this new year. Thank you. Just might ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like for us to keep our leaders, our nation's leaders, in our prayers and our thoughts this evening during our moment of silence. There's some pretty serious things going on in the world and even though there's no direct impact on us at this time, it could very well have impact on all of us. So let's keep them in our prayers. Thank you. Counsel, I need a motion to approve the agenda or if someone has an amendment they'd like to make, please indicate that at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 3C to allow, add item 3C to the agenda to allow for a branch library presentation.
Do I have a second, Counsel?
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is made and carried. This time, I'll call on our interim town manager, planning director for staff report.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. I forgot to approve the consent agenda. Dad Bob it. And I was gonna make some comments about that, too. The consent agenda tonight includes council meeting minutes for December the 3rd, 2019, and the budget amendment at the amount of $175,000 to cover expenses associated with Hurricane Dorian. FEMA reimbursement of those dollars is anticipated. This is a bookkeeping function more than it is anything else. I need a motion to, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Counsel.
I second it.
Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Are we realizing the income from that this year, this fiscal year, from FEMA?
That's a question you'd have to ask Bonnie.
Ideally, yes. Realistically, probably not. I mean, when I met with Councilwoman Elizabeth yesterday, she was asking that question and I told her that for Matthew, it took us up to two years to get all of the money from them. I will tell you that we have been working very closely with our FEMA representative on getting these things submitted. We've met all the deadlines as required and that sort of thing. Hopefully, we will get the majority of the money before June the 30th. If not, when the auditor comes in, that amount will be recognized as a receivable that we're due from FEMA. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie.
Just to make sure that everyone heard the number, the number is $475,000 and it was primarily for debris processing, is my understanding.
Debris cleanup, that's exactly right. Thank you, Elizabeth. Now, I can call on my interim town... I got you. I got you. All in favor of approving a consent agenda as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, can I call on Wes?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm making a few mistakes tonight. I must be.
No problem.
I had too much to drink, I think.
No problem at all. Thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of Counsel. I have a couple brief reports for y'all tonight. I'll start with the planning department report. For December, there were two zoning permits issued. There were 15 building permits issued. It consisted of two addition remodels, three remodels, one accessory, two repairs, and seven others. There are still 16 single-family dwellings under construction in the town and the total amount of fees collected in December was $4,008.09. With respect to the town planning board, they had a meeting scheduled for January 21st and due to no receipt of applications to consider, that meeting has been canceled. Any questions on those items?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
The chart that you have up there, does that reflect 64A Ocean Boulevard?
That was not issued in the month of December. That would've been in November, I believe. Perhaps October. It wasn't December.
Their permits were issued in November previously.
It wasn't in the month of December. It was prior to December.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Wes.
Any other questions on that? I'll move into the interim manager report. If there are no further questions on those. First, with respect to Capitol Street projects, surveying is currently underway for the COH Trail Street project. Plan drafting is currently underway for the Hillcrest Drive Street project. With respect to the East Dogwood Trail Street project, the bid period is currently open. All the documents are available on the website, town website. Mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held on January 14th at 10:00 a.m. and the bid opening is scheduled for January 23rd. The project completion date for that would be May 1st. And lastly, with respect to Capitol Streets, the Dewberry Lane Street Improvement Plans have been finalized and a meeting with adjacent property owners will be scheduled in the next few weeks to review the plans with them and answer any questions they may have. With respect to the South Dogwood Trail walking path, I'm sure folks have seen that forming has commenced. They've started work on the project near the cemetery in that vicinity. I was told that, or I saw forming yesterday, didn't get out there today, but forming has occurred and pouring will begin tomorrow in that area, weather permitting. Lastly, with respect to, and you've probably seen or heard this in the media, we have received the letter of final determination regarding the new flood maps that were actually released in 2016. We, along with the other jurisdictions in Dare County, have until June 19th to adopt the new maps and to update our flood damage prevention ordinance. We, town staff, planning department, has been meeting with the other planning departments in the county to discuss potential higher regulatory standards, which would hopefully reduce the potential impacts associated with the reduced base flood elevations established in these new maps. When the maps were first released, we and the planning departments in the county formed a CRS users group, which has met almost monthly to discuss the maps, the potential impacts, receive input from the Home Builders Association, Realtors Association, engineers, surveyors, and discuss how to move forward. We will be presenting information regarding the new maps and the proposed higher regulatory standards that we discussed at the February 4th council meeting. So we'll give you a full update on where we are and what it all entails at that time. And then, the process will continue with the planning board considering it and beginning their discussions in February, at their February 18th meeting. So we have until June 19th to adopt the maps and update our ordinance. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions, Counsel?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
I believe if we don't do anything, the maps would be adopted anyhow, wouldn't they?
We, locally, the town council will have to adopt the maps.
Okay. That doesn't...
It doesn't just automatically...
If we don't, they don't automatically go into effect for here?
I'm not 100% sure. Most likely.
For some reason, well, I'll mention it in my comments. I was at the commissioners' meeting and Donna Creve gave a presentation on, you know, for the unincorporated area. And I thought she indicated that even if we don't do something, they still will go into effect. So I don't know. I mean, that was her comment.
I would say most likely that makes sense, but I'm not 100% sure.
And she explained that, you know, the local elevation standards as well.
We will do that at the February meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions for Wes? I'll handle it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'll call our police chief, David Cole. Good evening, David.
Evening, Mayor, members of Counsel. Happy New Year. This is the December 2019 report for the police department. As you can see, we had 1,982 calls per service. And under the incidents, which are the actual crimes that were reported, we had a total of five. One of those was resulting in an assault and three were drug-related and one had to do with an animal call. Under the criminal arrest, we had one arrest for the assault and six for the drugs, for a total of seven. We had two reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of December. And officers conducted 145 traffic stops. Not at 145, they issued 43 written citations and another 86 warning citations for December. And we had one ordinance violation for firefighters' display as far as parking. The only other thing I'd like to do is have just a couple of pictures. A lot of the officers, we spent a lot of time for Christmas. This was the Toys for Tots and we actually made a couple of deliveries into town of Southern Shores for a couple of families. And then, we had the one on top, that was Kmart. That is the Earl Murray, Sergeant Murray, who was killed about 10 years ago. This is actually the 10th anniversary of Toys for Tots, or for Shop with a Cop at Kmart. And we helped out 23 children this Christmas. And that's just a good feeling. And the one down below is another Shop with a Cop, but also EMS as well. And that one was at Walmart. And that was put on by Kitty Hawk. Any other questions, concerns? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Ed DeBrocker, our Chief. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, everybody. So for the month of December, the fire department responded to a total of 52 calls. And pretty simply, again, breaks down, this was a slower month for us, thank God, so four structure fires, one brush fire, one outside equipment fire, 33 medical calls, one motor vehicle accident with injuries, one electric equipment problem, four service calls, one assistive police or other agency, one cover-up or standby, one smoke mistaken for, or steam mistaken for smoke, and then two alarms, again, for the total of 52 for the month. Anybody have any questions on the report?
If not, thank you, Chief.
Next month, I derailed, or I pushed it back to next month for the year-end. I never really did one, but I thought it was a good idea this year in particular, do a year-end, just give you a layout of what happened during the year for the fire requirement. I pushed it back a month only because we're gonna be taking your time up tonight with the building and I didn't want to push the meeting too long, so next month, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
All right.
Wes? Town manager's report?
I already did it.
You gave that with your other part? I apologize. I didn't pick up on that. I was hoping you'd hear from me again. Town attorney's report?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed, you're, I think you're back up again with your presentation. Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department Facilities and Construction Update.
All right, so I asked Kerry Colson and Greg Evans, who's the new project manager for the fire station, to come and give an update. And he probably can answer your questions better than I can at this point, so we'll just let him take over. If you have a question for me after he's done, I'll certainly chime in. All right?
Thank you.
Greg Evans?
Welcome.
How y'all doing tonight?
Very good.
What we're looking at as far as our schedule, I'm just pushing forward as far as the months coming ahead. Today, we actually had our trust delivery, which means that hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll be enclosing the office areas, which means we'll be able to get started on our PMNEs, drywall, insulation, paint, et cetera, et cetera. So in the meantime, we're continuing, and I had a little bit of schedule on our bit rip veneer, but we're still working on that. And with exception of a few engineering issues that we are still battling out, we're trying to make as best progress as we can.
Any questions, Counsel?
Who are you battling engineering issues with?
It's just plans that we're modifying, we're having to modify because of the issues, some of the issues that we had.
Oh, it's not state permitting?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
No, sir.
So it becomes an architectural thing?
Architectural. I think it's probably par for the course for any big job like that, but we're working through it with the guys.
Not to hold you to anything, but do you have a ballpark estimate on...
Of course. We're probably looking at a...
When we can have the move-in party?
We're looking at a May finish is what we're looking for.
You're talking about May 1 or May...
2020.
Oh, 2020.
Almost got you. Mid to end is what we're looking for.
So middle of May is the earliest, probably. That was my question as well. Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel?
Yep. Apparently, you had a problem early on with the steel being...
Yes, sir.
What was the issue there?
The lack thereof. There were some issues with the, I guess, as far as more of the drawings, the calculations, the metal building, or the Red Steel Company were having a little bit of confusion, I guess, as far as what they were supposed to be providing, some of the calculations that they had and then the drawings. And now, honestly, they went through a good battle of project managers for the job, so it took a little while for them to get their act together.
Okay.
So since this has been delivered, we've been dealing with one project manager and he seems to be on top of everything.
So the biggest hole-up's been the steel?
Yes, sir.
You'd probably be closer to being on your original schedule, had not the steel issue arisen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Counsel? Appreciate the update.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ed. Go ahead.
While we're up here, if we can just address one thing, I know that everyone will want to instantly get in and have a moving party, but I'm just not gonna do that to myself. June is gonna be, we'll be right on top of the season. I don't plan on doing any open house thing until October with the Kitty Hawk Elementary, just as normally as we do, so we can get in there and get around. I'm just not gonna put that kind of pressure on my crew or me, myself, so, just so we just all know right away.
I'm just so glad I got you to take, take charge of the party, Chief.
I didn't say that, no. So, okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you, though. Appreciate you, appreciate the folks from Chesson coming out and talking to us. See, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. At this time, I want to take just a moment and recognize Elizabeth Morey, our mayor, poach ham for her service to our planning board for the past many years. The Southern Shores Town Council recognizes your service on the town planning board from July 2010 to November 2019. That's some sort of record, probably.
It's too long, clearly.
The town council and the citizens of the town express their gratitude for your dedicated service. The town will always be considered unique as long as volunteers desire to serve their town unselfishly to make it a better place to live. We wish you the very best for the future and thank you.
Thank you.
Normally, we'd go out in front of the podium, at this podium, have a shake-your-hand type thing and a welcoming, but thank you. And Elizabeth said she wanted to do it up here and save the photo op for later, so I told Sheila that and she's all prepared.
Mr. Mayor, would this be an okay time to congratulate Mark Martin for his appointment to the home?
Well, yes, it would. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I'll tell you what, one of our residents, Mark Martin, who's in the room now, is a local builder, very reputable local builder, I would add, and was just elected in the last month or so as a president of North Carolina Home Builders. So I think that's a feather in his cap and certainly a credit to what he's done and with his life as a builder. Congratulations, Mark. This time, I'd call on Mike Fletcher.
Yeah, I'm on it.
Sure, that's fine. This is, you're gonna talk to us about the status of our, where the library, where the library stands.
Yes, could you put up the, yeah, that picture on? Can you get the other one on the second monitor? Well, we'll do one at a time if we have to.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to present the major portions of our report verbally for the record and once I'm finished, Lilius will answer any questions regarding the proposed site. Hope I have your approval on that. The report to the town council of Southern Shores from the library committee. Our mission was to determine the level of interest and feasibility of establishing a branch of the Dare County Library in Southern Shores. The report, we have three parts. One is the findings, two feasibility, three conclusions, and a request for the town council. One, findings of the committee. The committee concluded a survey of three northern beach towns, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores, and Duck. There were 400 responses. Of these, 80% were in favor of a Dare County library branch being set up in Southern Shores. This being central to the three towns. Well, while numerous reasons for this were cited, the main consensus was that of convenience, saving time and gas, particularly in the congested summer months. It would fill the void between Corolla and Kill Devil Hills. Present users would go more frequently and more would become users, as well as books and loans and reading. A computer section offering services for internet courses, resume preparation and job applications, and high-speed research would be welcome, along with a comprehensive access to news, periodicals, and magazines. Further, though the initial meeting and survey showed strong interest was expressed in having a community gathering and meeting space as well, permitting programs for adults, children to be brought to northern Dare County. Section two, feasibility. The biggest factor in establishing a branch of Dare County Library system in Southern Shores is finding a suitable premises. The committee pursued several possible possibilities, but one location stood out. The former law offices, a building at Sixth Juniper Trail, Southern Shores, had space available. It is centrally located and is easily accessible. The present owner of Sixth Juniper Trail is Town Bank. The estimated size of the proposed library is 2,000 square feet, which is about the same size as Hatteras and Corolla libraries. Town Bank has offered to lease this space for a branch of the Dare County Library for $1 a year for 10 years. The committee checked on zoning, building compliance, and fire safety compliance. The building is presently zoned for office use. A modest zoning change would be necessary to permit its use as a library. Modification of the structure would have to be made in order to meet the requirements of Dare County Library operating space. An engineering plan, could you put that up? Excuse me. An engineering plan has been developed and approved by Town Bank. The cost of modification, capital improvement, would be the responsibility of the tenant of Dare County. Conclusions. The survey results indicate to us that there is a strong interest and enthusiasm in establishing a Dare County Library branch in Southern Shores for a variety of reasons and uses. The Sixth Juniper Trail location is well-suited for establishment of a library. Additionally, the lease terms on Sixth Juniper Trail property offered by Tom Brank are extremely generous and would allow the library to be operated at comparatively low cost for at least 10 years. The committee requests the following: that the Southern Shores Town Council support establishment of a branch of the Dare County Library at Sixth Juniper Trail, Southern Shores, to benefit the residents of Southern Shores, Duck, and Kitty Hawk. Also, that the Southern Shores Town Council authorize the Southern Shores Library Committee to continue its endeavors and present this project for implementation by Dare County Commissioners in time to meet the Dare County budget deadline for years 2020 to 2021. Thank you for your consideration on this matter, the committee. And I'll mention the many members of the committee now. Mike Fletcher, chairman, myself, Jim Connors, who was our sponsor, Mary Lou Hopperd, Loretta Michaels, Lilius Morrison for the town of Duck, Terry Cullen, Kevin Wright, town of Kitty Hawk, Gary Perry, Mayor, Kitty Hawk, Andy Stewart, town manager, and Mary Boswell. Also, a note, upon approval of the branch library project by Southern Shores Town Council, the town of Southern Shores Town Council Library will present the project to both the town council of Duck and Kitty Hawk Town Council for their support and approval before presentation to the Dare County Board of Commissioners. That is our report. If you have any questions, Lilius will address them.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening.
Good evening.
Lilius, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors.
Any questions, Counsel?
I don't, but I was at the meeting last night.
So what you're basically looking for is for us to say, let's move forward, I think. That's the way I read this. Give you the okay from this council to say, go talk to the people in Kitty Hawk and people in Duck. You have our blessing, type thing.
Exactly. We would like you, as Mayor and the council, to say you support this endeavor and that you welcome a branch library, a branch of the Dare County Library in Southern Shores. I'm sorry. I don't, I think it's a matter for the council to support the project. We can certainly go to the planning board later. And of course, I have discussed it with the town planner, Mr. West.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
We briefly discussed it.
I'm certainly in support of this. I've come to the conclusion that it is a good idea. Now, we may have to start smaller and grow into it, but I'd like to suggest we go ahead and authorize the committee to go ahead and continue to make a presentation like they did here to Duck and Kitty Hawk.
That's really all we're committing to at this point, is we support you and we'll give our blessing to you going to talk to Kitty Hawk and Duck, as I read it.
Yes, and we're also asking that... We're asking you, number one, to support it.
Right.
And number two, to authorize us as a town committee to go to the Dare County Commissioners after we've been to Duck and Kitty Hawk, to present the project to the Dare County Commissioners.
Let's take them one at a time. I need a motion, Counsel, from someone to support their efforts.
I'd like to make a motion to support the branch library committee's efforts to continue their endeavors and at this point, that primarily means talking to the towns of Duck and Kitty Hawk. And that this council supports those efforts and after talking to the towns of Duck and Kitty Hawk, please just let us know how those went and then we can authorize going over to the Dare County Commissioners. Do I need to cut that down?
Yes.
Do. She's got it.
She's got it. Gosh, she's good.
Do I? Yes, Lilius.
May I make a comment?
Certainly.
Thank you. As Mike Fletcher mentioned at the end of the report, it would be very desirable to get into the 2020-2021 budget for the county. And that budget process begins in February, continues into March, and is finalized in June. And we believe there is a window for this endeavor, to get into that process. And we are eager to approach both Kitty Hawk and... And by, we are eager to approach both Kitty Hawk and Duck very quickly this month and then get to the county in the next four weeks to see if we can get traction on this cause.
Has, has there been any preliminary?
So, you see, Mr. Connors' motion to split this into this month and next month is going to slow down this process, which we are eager to keep moving.
Has, has there been any preliminary discussion with the county?
No.
So, you know, if they could give you a feel one way or the other.
Well, we thought, we, we thought it best to get, since, to get the approval of the town. And with, with strong approval and support from the Town of Southern Shores, we felt it, and then of course, to bring Kitty Hawk and Duck along, then we felt it would be appropriate to talk, to approach the county.
Do, do you know when the county has their February meeting?
I believe it's February the fourth.
And what's the date of ours?
There, there is of course a meeting, I believe it's the twenty-first of January, but I think that's a bit ambitious. But I've found out there is a meeting February the fourth, which would, would certainly give us time to go to Kitty Hawk and Duck.
If theirs is February fourth, ours is also, ours is in the evening, theirs are during the daytime.
No, theirs are only on Monday.
Mr. Mayor and members of the Council, if you were to give us approval tonight and authorize us to proceed, as well as approaching the towns, we would be preparing an appropriate presentation to go to the county and probably informally discuss with any, any Dare County Commissioners, you see.
Did Mr., did, did Mr. Connors' motion satisfy both those requirements?
My, my understanding, Mr. Connors' motion to say the town would approve this month that we go to, to Kitty Hawk and Duck.
Right.
And that, once we've been there, that the Council next month would approve us to go to the county. And in my opinion, that is too mu, that is not giving us enough time to proceed with this cause.
The, the motion has not yet been seconded, has it?
That's why I'm waiting to hear what, what we need, how we need to amend it or modify so we can get a second.
Can I try that again? I'll be shorter this time.
Yeah. They're asking for, they're asking that we, that we, that we give them our blessing as far as establishing a, a, a branch library. That's the first thing they want.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that this council support the Branch Library Committee in establishing the Branch Library in Southern Shores and that we authorize them to talk to the towns of Kitty Hawk, Duck, and after that's complete, the Dare County Commissioners. So that they can get, well, that's the motion.
Is that adequate, do you think? Satisfy what you need?
I think we would like it to clearly state, first, the support of this Town Council.
Right.
Of the Mayor, and secondly, very clearly state that the Council, the Mayor and Council authorize us to present this project to Dare County Commissioners.
Yes, we did.
I want it clear, I would like it to clearly state it.
Let's, let's, let's make sure that, that the motion, she's asked, what will we give them? I, I, as I see it, the Southern Shores Town Council is, is simply indicating that to you that we support your efforts to establish a, a regional library, a library here in Southern Shore. That's, that's one motion.
Yes.
That's one.
Do I have a second for that motion, Council?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion about that motion? All, all in favor that that motion has been presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The second motion, as I see it, is you want our blessing. You want us to authorize or tell you it's okay with us if you go talk to Kitty Hawk and Duck.
And Dare County.
And Dare County, I'm sorry.
I, I think we, we don't, yes, the, the important part of motion two is that, that the Mayor and Council authorize us as a town committee to go and present the project to the Dare County Commissioners.
Do we need a resolution to do this? Or should there be a resolution?
I, my, my, I would just say so moved to Council, if they agree with that.
Well, nobody's answered my question.
She's, she's made the motion, she's made the motion that we, she wants us to, she quoted the motion to us that she wants us to make.
Well, the question I got is, as we proceed through this and getting to Dare County, are they gonna require that we have some type of resolution or some other documentation?
Let them tell us that.
I mean, I'm just asking.
It's a, it's a good question, and we can, we can always address that.
So that we're somewhat prepared and don't slow up this process. You know, if we wait for them, it could slow the whole process up.
Well, I think that if they go over there and make a presentation, they know it's coming. If they tell the Library Committee they need a resolution from us, then we can do it that night, that, that evening.
I, I, I think, and of course, our Town Attorney can certainly speak to it. If, if the Council simply authorizes us as a town committee
Right.
to present the project to the Dare County Commissioners. I, I feel, Attorney, that we don't need a resolution.
That stands now, isn't it?
I, I think he, that's the motion he's made.
Yes.
He took your language to, that the Mayor and Council would authorize the committee to go to Duck and Kitty Hawk and then to present to the Board of County Commissioners. And he's made that motion and...
I second that motion.
I've got, I've had a second.
But an, an alternate was raised, you see.
Any further discussion?
Is there ain't gonna be any additional documentation other than what's in the minutes to, to move this along? I know we got a motion, but, and we've got a second to it. But the question I got is, is there any, do we need any other documentation other than what would be recorded in the minutes to proceed?
If you look at the report, there's very two clear requests. We could reword our motion to say we grant the request in your report. And, I mean, I know we have a motion on the floor we need to vote on, but if, if it's unclear, we can actually adopt the language of their request.
I, I just don't want us to get partway down the road and somebody says, oh, you just gotta do this.
If you, if you prefer, then I would just adopt these two bullet points that they've included in our report and just say, as a Council, I, I know we have a motion on the floor we need to vote on, but if, if you wanted more clarity, I would use their language specifically and say that we grant these two requests.
And that's a good point, we could always do that. Just amend, amend our motion. We've already voted on the first one, and the second we haven't voted on. Let's amend the motion to just, the motion just to include those two statements. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No, I can agree to that.
So, all in favor of amending the motion that I initiated by just incorporating, by changing that motion to where it uses the exact wording in the committee request, indicate by saying aye.
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 Anything else we would have to do for you?
I just wanted to make one comment. As she pointed out, there will be a zoning approval that would be required prior to, you know, the use going into the actual building. But also, I think the discussions with Kitty Hawk and Duck in Dare County, obviously funding is gonna be a source of discussion. So this, I wouldn't say this is your final approval. You know, I think it's, you're gonna have to make subsequent decisions about this later on. One, the zoning, and then two, the funding.
I agree with that.
So, that's, that's...
This thing has got a lot of thing, a lot of steps still to cover.
I figured that was the other shooter dropping.
But right now, they're still trying to sell the idea. And I think that the county is gonna be the resister on this. I hope I'm wrong. But also, Mr. Fletcher, if you could, just let me know when y'all go over there. I'd like to go with you. I mean, it's your presentation, but I'd just like to be there also.
Well, actually, I think it would be a good idea for, for anybody from the Council to support or...
I'll, I'll be there.
Would be effective to, to our proposal, because it would indicate good support.
Yes, okay.
As a footnote, we have done some investigation and been through the Fire Marshal, who is the Building Inspector, and the Building Inspector and our zoning planner, manager, to get, we have a lot of preliminary information and preliminary costing, which we will be pursuing as we work with the county. So, Mayor and Councilors, thank you very much for your support. We appreciate your being positive about this.
Thank you, Lilius, very much, and you and Mike, both, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Mr. Fletcher, Ms. Morrison, I'd like to thank you all and everybody on the committee. Y'all have done a phenomenal job. It, it's incredible how much you've gathered. So, anyway, thank you.
This time we'll open, do you want a public comment?
Nobody signed up.
No one signed up. Thank you. Under old business, this time I'd like to welcome Joshua Smalls from Bay Disposal. Talk to us about where we stand with our recycling program, or where we don't stand. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Joshua.
So, I'm just here to provide an update tonight. At the last meeting, we talked about TFC and the increased cost of the recycling market. So we have a new update tonight. TFC is still at an increased cost. It's basically gonna be a fluctuating monthly market rate. So there's no guarantee at this point. They'll give us a rate and it'll stand for the month. And at the first of the month, we'll get a new rate, you know, to adjust accordingly. The same thing in that sense. TFC has ran into a market where they don't have any buyers for the material. So right now, if we were to send them material, we would be charged accordingly as if it's being recycled. But essentially, they don't have any buyers overseas, so I can't speak exactly what they're doing with it, but currently, they're asking us to divert the material. So that's the biggest update since the last meeting. We proposed an alternative solution, talking to Wes, David, and Bonnie. We have a waste energy plant that's in Virginia. I know some of the residents of Southern Shores met with me after the last meeting in the hallway, and they asked about that. It's definitely an option. It is local. We're currently working with the state, trying to get, we have to amend our permit to be able to use that. So we're in the final stage. We were hoping to have an answer for tonight's meeting, but we were, hopefully by end of the week at the latest, we'll have that final approval to be able to continue taking material there for the short-term use. We are sending material there with the, with the lack of TFC accepting. So, short-term, we have approval, but we're trying to get long-term approval until there's a market again. So currently, we're just waiting on that last approval. Like I said, it could be as early as tomorrow, hopefully no later than the end of the week. The rate that we're looking at for the waste energy is sixty-five dollars per ton. So it's, it's approximately half the cost as the TFC rate that we discussed last meeting. Just to kind of give everyone in the room an update, the surrounding communities are also in the exact same scenario that we're discussing tonight. You know, Bay Disposal does service most of the towns and counties in our area. So the material that we haul for them, whether we collect it curbside like in Southern Shores or we simply haul it from the transfer, it still has to end up somewhere. So TFC was that option for everybody in the area, and currently, it's not an option for anyone. So all the surrounding communities are in the exact same situation. We've, I've met with all the local towns, communities, counties, and everybody's aware of the situation that we're in. So everybody's kind of in the deciding phase, also waiting on that final approval from the state before they make a final decision. That's kind of the basic update that I have for you tonight, so I know that's a little different than the last meeting that we discussed, but I'd be happy to take questions.
Are you, are you confident you're gonna get the permitting?
Um, I would, I would say that I'm ninety-nine percent confident. Of course, there's always the chance that they'll say no. I'd, I'd love to tell you that I'm a hundred percent. But at the same time, the state is considering the, the local situation we're in, the circumstances. They know that there's no other plants close by. So the cost for us to send it to the next closest plant, you know, as, as we discussed, it's, it's in the upwards, from the mid hundred-and-fifty-dollar range up. So the state recognizes that, and they're trying to work with everybody and provide at least a waste energies alternative solution. It may not be the exact situation that they wish for recycling, but it's, it's better than being buried in a landfill. So I think the state is trying to work with us and recognize that we're trying to do the right thing. I, I feel ninety-nine percent confident that we'll get the approval. It's simply a matter of, you know, the state talking on themselves with the situation that we're in as far as options in the area and just giving us the okay to continue doing that.
So we're basically looking at what you, you presented to us last, in this discussion about the last time with the wheel, the wheel operator option, which is they take the, the material to a, to a site where it can be furnished.
Yes, sir.
And, and generate power through steam to provide that electricity to, I guess it's Fort Smith, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the Navy Base.
Yep, so that, so that's what we're talking about. We're trying to get the actual approval from the state. Of course, we've been working with them, but we're still, we're in the middle stage right now. So they know that we're, because we don't have any market at TFC, they know that we're currently doing that. That's recent, since the last meeting that I was here last month. But, you know, of course, we have to move the material. We can't just store it. So they know we're doing that currently, and we're just trying to get the actual approval to continue doing so. If they come back with an alternative solution or different options, then we'll, we'll review those and, you know, be in contact with Wes, Bonnie, David accordingly, and of course, the Council as well, and see what we can do.
Is TFC actually cut you off from delivering material to them, or what, or is there a drop dead date somewhere?
TFC hasn't cut us off necessarily. We're still a customer, we're still, we still have a working relationship with TFC. But unfortunately, being that they don't have a buyer to buy the material, they're not really able to accept it, 'cause they, you know, they can't just store it either.
They can't store it either.
Until they have a buyer. If they had a buyer, then we, we would be allowed to return. But with the market in this current state that it's in and, and the near outlook, I don't think that it's gonna be an option short-term.
Just to clarify in my mind, you're, you're, you're taking the material now to, to Wheel Abraider?
Correct.
And that's, you, you're gonna have to keep doing that unless they decide to take the material from you?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And, and you gave us a rate of that, the cost per ton, I think we have all that information?
Yes, sir. The, the rate per ton at Wheel Abraider is sixty-five dollars per ton. So it's, it's approximately half of what we were talking about for TFC.
Are, are you asking for a rate increase tonight?
No, sir.
We'll be waiting till the permits are here?
No, sir. We were gonna wait until we got the final approval from the state or, you know, if they say no and give us alternative options, then we would, we would come back and we'd all be on the same page before we ask for the rate increase.
I mean, based on what I see here in this estimate, it looks like it would be around, if some, around six dollars and fifty-nine cents a, a home. Which is a little bit higher than what we're paying now.
Correct, yes, sir.
But not like we were thought we were paying.
Correct, yes, sir.
When you came last month, we were talking about like a thirty-seven percent increase.
Right.
So if we, if you can make this work, Josh, if you could make this work, then I, I would assume we would draw a new contract with the town and your, and your company, which our attorney, your attorney would probably be involved in. Is that, is that, is that what you see happening?
Uh, yes, sir. I think for right now, we were all just trying to make sure that we understood where each other were for tonight. We're not asking for any voting on the increase. We're gonna postpone that. And then, like you said, if the state gives us the final okay, I believe it was my understanding from Wes that we would draw a new contract between us, and that's when we would ask for the increase. And then, I guess that's where it would be voted on by the Council.
That's basically what you and I talked about earlier.
And then we'd have to have a budget amendment to cover that.
That's correct. If that's the option y'all chose, there would have to be a budget amendment.
Well, what other option?
I think Bonnie said it was around thirteen thousand for until the end of June.
Sixteen thousand, six eighty.
Till the end of June.
Now, I've worked on state permitting projects before where the state says it'll take you three months, and two years later, you're still fighting the state. Do you, I'm exaggerating a little bit, not much, but do you anticipate something like that? Or do you feel confident that the state is working to get you a permit as quick as possible?
So we have the permit, of course, to exist... So, we have the permit, of course, the existing permit. We're just asking for the modification as to where we're hauling the material.
Right.
Um, I think the state, the state is seeing this across the state, it's not just us. So, they were already, they were already working on it, and I, I do think that by the end of this week, I do believe we'll have an answer.
Okay.
It's, I was trying really hard to have an answer by tonight. They were trying to escalate it, but it takes, you know, there's basically three subdivisions of the department that have to work together, so the la, the latest answer as of four forty-five tonight was hopefully tomorrow, but no later than the end of the week.
Okay. Well, good luck. I never trust the state on that, but...
Right.
Let's hope so.
What other, this falls apart, what other option would there be, if any?
It's hard to say right now. There's, I mean, there's no other local plants, so with TFC not accepting material, that's honestly how we ended up at the alternative solution of Wheel Abraider. So, I, it's honestly hard to say what the other options are, were.
Other than hauling it all over the place, which is costly.
Correct. Right. So, I, and that's the biggest thing, the state's understanding, they're, they're aware of our area, they work with us, you know, I would say quarterly, we're in contact, talking to each other about the state of the recycling market locally, and they, they know the plants in the area, and they, they communicate with them as well. So, they've been in touch with TFC, they know the circumstances that we're facing, and I, I think the state will be willing to work with us, and, you know, until the markets turn around, I think Wheel Abraider's probably gonna have to be the alternative solution. At least, you know, I mean, honestly, we see it as reusing, but it's, it's better than not doing anything at all.
Yeah, if you wanna learn a little more about the, how chaotic it is, I went out on Google and typed in "the future of recycling in America," and that was an in, interesting experience, 'cause I got a bunch of stuff here, and there is no solution, a workable solution, that comes up in that. Everybody's fighting the same problem. Some towns have figured out around it, some have just stopped altogether.
Right.
And I know the little town where I grew up in Northwest Illinois, their processors stopped taking glass, and then they had to work around at, at curbside. Now, they have a bin at one of the supermarkets, and they have to bring the glass there, and then that gets shipped, I think, to Missouri. So, it's, it's a challenge of how we're gonna move, how to, not just, how the US is gonna move forward without China and other countries taking all our stuff.
Yes, sir.
Back, back to what goes on here in Dare County, isn't it, my understanding is, the town of Southern Shores, because we have the contract with you guys, we're servicing individual homeowners at a less costly rate than, say, town of Kill Devil Hills that has a subscription-by-home service, is that fair, would that be fair to say?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So, because the contract for Southern Shores is written for every home, and as you can see with the tonnage and the participation numbers, every home doesn't participate, so the rate is reduced to account for that. So, the subscription customers, the rate is higher, but it's, it's based on a true actual number of customers in the town, so that, that's the difference in the two.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, I would, my, from my perspective, I think we're better off to recycle through Wheel Abraider than to go to a landfill, and that's, looks like the eternity, the alternative we have to consider.
We don't have much of a choice.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You talk about the market improving, do you see anything on the horizon where it would improve?
No.
I would like to tell you yes, but the honest answer is no. That, that's kind of where we're hoping for the approval from the state, again, being that they understand that, so if the market turns around, then, you know, T, again, we're still a customer of TFC, so if they have a buyer, then we'll be able to continue, you know, turn around and go back there, but for the near, I'd call it at least the rest of this year, I don't foresee that really being an option.
And your subscription rate for the other towns is thirteen a cart?
Uh, roughly, yes, sir. They vary a little bit time to time, but I'd call it an average thirteen.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
The, the subscription rate for other towns is thirteen a cart, per, per household. Thank you for providing the numbers we asked for last month.
Yeah, thank.
It's really edifying.
Indeed, I'd like to echo that. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just wanna comment, it's, uh, to Elizabeth's point, I mean, it's sixty-two percent participation rate, we're still saving roughly a hundred and eighty thousand dollars versus individual homes enlisting through Bay Disposal, so I appreciate that very much.
Yes, sir, no problem.
We very much appreciate the service that we're getting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Joshua.
No problem. Appreciate your time.
What's our next step in this process?
Wait for the report. Permit.
We're waiting for what you'll...
Wait for the...
Okay, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that.
Yeah, so we're waiting on the answer from DEQ, and then I'll get with Wes, Bonnie, and David, and go from there.
Wes will get back with us when he, when he, yes, that's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is capital infrastructure improvement planning committee appointments. What's your, what's your pleasure, council, on this? I think we're not quite ready to make those, make those nominations, so...
If I may, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we allow our, our newer board council members to have a little bit more time in order to get a, a good appointee to the committee, and we hope to come back to this council next month with those suggestions, if that's okay.
Table this February meeting.
That's my motion, yes.
And I'll second it.
Thank you.
Any discussion, council?
I have a question, 'cause I would support the motion. If I'm gonna be, will I be co-chair in the next meeting?
You and I would be.
Okay.
I didn't hear your question.
Will I be co-chair at the next meeting?
At the next CIP meeting.
If we have a meeting before the CIP, before we get back to that, to our next council meeting?
Yeah.
Well, not actually before our next council meeting, but before the next round of appointments. I just, I'll be sitting with Jim for the next CIP meeting.
Yeah, we'll be meeting as a council before the next scheduled meeting.
I would think so.
I would think it would be that way, or we certainly could.
We don't have a CIP scheduled in January, do we?
We don't have, we don't have a CIP meeting scheduled currently. It was pending the appointments, so I would say...
So, the last CIP meeting, there was some discussion about it early February, early January.
Yeah, I thought we, I thought we agreed on having one in February.
That was assuming that y'all were gonna make the appointments this month, but now that y'all have tabled, were suggested, were considering tabling till February, I would suggest waiting to hold the CIP meeting until after y'all have made the appointments.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to...
So, after, after our meeting on February the fourth?
Correct.
We can do that.
Can we still schedule it in February?
We can schedule, we can hold a CIP meeting in February.
After, after the appointment.
We can pick a date.
Got, I got that part, yes, but...
We'll pick a day consistent with...
I think there's a lot of things going on with the capital improvements committee. I just didn't wanna wait till May or whatever. Okay.
We have a motion on the floor to, to table this perception, and, or give them the opportunity to present their candidates to us at February meeting.
And I second it.
And you second it, and we had a discussion about it, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's made and carried to, to table the, the actual appointments until February, until February meeting. At this time, item C on the, on the, on the agenda is the planning board appointments. Currently, we have four candidates for what are essentially three vacancies or openings on our planning board, one regular and two alternate, alternate positions. All of these candidates are, in my mind, well-qualified to serve, and I want to thank them for volunteering to take on this role. I would ask that each candidate nomination be addressed separately by council, by council motion. The candidates for planning boards this time are Mrs. Linda Buick, Mr. Tony DiBernardo, who's currently serving on the board as an alternate, Mr. George Berry, and Mr. Robert McLendon. I would open nominations at this time.
I would like to nominate for the position that's open on the planning board that was created by my resignation. I would like to recommend and offer for that nomination, Mr. Tony DiBernardo.
And I'll second it.
Yeah. Any, any further discussion, council? All in favor of appointing Mr. DiBernardo to the council, to the planning board, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. You're in.
Congratulations.
Yay!
Condolences.
So, who would like to make a motion for this?
I would like to make a motion for alternate one for the planning board to, to be Linda Buick.
I'll second that one.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Linda Buick being made an alternate member of the planning board, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, indicate by saying no?
No.
No. Note there were three ayes votes and two no votes, Linda, Linda's been appointed to the, to the planning board.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make one comment before y'all move forward. Everyone might not know that alternate member, Michael Basaloon, resigned on Sunday, so I'm not sure if everyone was aware of that or not.
I didn't know y'all knew it or not, but anyway, he's not a, he's not, he's, he's has resigned, and we've been moving forward to fill his space.
He has resigned, so that means that coming into tonight, y'all actually had two alternate or one alternate vacant, vacant seats, and now that you've appointed Mike or Tony DiBernardo as a regular member, you now have another vacant seat to select or to fill from the applications you had.
So, we can nominate someone else for that, for that spot. Is there a nomination?
I would like to nominate Robert McLendon.
Second.
Robert McLendon. And I have a second for that motion, to that motion. Any, any further discussion?
I think he'd be an asset to the, to our town. He's a low-impact development specialist with CSI, and he has worked on other county boards, currently works on other county boards, so I think he'd be a great asset to the planning board and to the town of Southern Shores.
And I agree with that. I've read his resume and actually met with him, and I think he's, he'd be an asset to our, to our, to our town and to, in this position.
In addition to his working with other towns and boards, he's also got a master's degree in landscape architecture, which I can't help but highlight, but I think he's pretty well-qualified to take a fresh look at a lot of the planning issues that we have here, so I certainly support him.
So, all in favor? Indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next case, here are planning board appointments. Anything, anything on, on new business, council, what you'd like for me to, like to discuss? If not, I'd ask for a general public comment, if anybody's signed up.
Apparently, we don't have...
No one's signed up?
If no one's signed up, then I'd...
Done, look. So, we got zero.
Whoever it was. No one's signed up? Thank you. I'll close publicly comment this time, then. I have no further discuss, no, no further comments or responses. Pass it over to the, to the count, to the mayor pro temp.
Just wanna, a big shout-out to all of our volunteers that make this town work, from our Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department to people that serve on boards and commissions. Couldn't, couldn't do the work of the town without you guys. Michael Basaloon is a volunteer with the fire department, and we're extremely excited and thrilled that he's willing to step up and do that, so, again, a big thank you to all of our volunteers.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I'd like to mention a couple things. During the month of January, I'm gonna be a busy puppy dog doing council duties. There's all kind of meetings to attend, like the census committee meeting, there's a state of the county committee, uh, state of the county meet, breakfast that's being held at Captain George's, I believe that one's the next week.
Yeah, the fifteenth.
Excuse me?
The fifteenth.
Okay, the fifteenth. Uh, we've got a breakfast game that's gonna be pretty well-attended, and it's gonna be talking about the current status of the Mid-Currituck County Bridge, which I'm kind of anxious to hear that one. And I will also be attending my first meeting of the, help me out on this term, the Government Education Access Chamber.
Right.
Oh, right, I got it right this time, so... But then also, on January twenty-first, this council meets again to talk about beach or nourishment, town hiring of the town manager, and there, there may be another item on that agenda too, but it's, um, one of these mid-month workshops. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Just, just to follow up on what Jim was saying about the mid, the mid-month meeting, we're gonna have apt come back, Mr. Ken Wilson, to talk to us about the, our situation on our beaches, and what he's come up with as far as some modifications to our original, to his original presentation. We're gonna have a company, DEC here to talk to us about financing options, should be decided to move forward with, with, with a nourishment project. And what's the other one you mentioned?
Town manager.
Yes. We're, we're gonna talk to a gentleman who's gonna talk to us about our town manager and protocol and procedures and processes for that. Leo?
I just got a couple things. I attended the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting yesterday, did win, they did approve me to go to the tourism board replacing Chris Nissan's place. There was a member-at-large, which if anybody looked at their agenda, there was like about twenty people that had signed up for that. Tim Cafferty was the one that they finally approved as a member-at-large. If you know, know Tim, he's, he owns OBX Blue Realty down here. As I said earlier, Donna Creve made a presentation on the, quote, "new flood maps." The takeaway there is, uh, don't go dropping your insurance, a flood insurance yet, and if you think about it, go visit with your insurance agent first. That was a takeaway that she wanted to, she wanted to make sure everybody understood that part of it. The other thing they had that I thought was pretty impressive was Jenny Collins, who is a lieutenant with the EMS group, they had a demonstration on a new device that they have on cardiac to help recover people that's had cardiac arrest. Believe it or not, Dare County this past year had seventy, they had calls on seventy-six cardiac arrests. The year before, it was sixty-one, but it's called a Lucas device, and I inquired with it, wouldn't she give a, have a demonstration here? And Wes, she did come back to me, I'll give you the email. I found it pretty, pretty interesting and educational to see what they do and how they do it. Rob Ross apparently had shadowed EMS group, and they had, somewhere when he was doing this, they did have a cardiac arrest, and when they arrived, the patient's heart wasn't beating, and result of this Lucas device, they were able to revive her and transport her to Duck Fire Department, and their med flight picked her up, took her to Norfolk, and she survived. And they're, they're giving that device the credit for helping her to, to survive, so I thought we might all have a demonstration here. They bring a mannequin in, they go through the process when they arrive at where there's the patient or the incident, what they do and how they do it. And she, and as they're doing it, she's narrating it, so I found it pretty interesting. We could, somewhere, schedule, schedule it into a meeting, it could be done on the front side, so they don't have to hang around here long. And the, and the other one that came up was, as you know, we changed, you know, we rolled into a new decade, so when we're signing stuff or dating information, we're basically saying zero, one, zero, one, two, zero, right? Well, you, this year, you might have put the whole year out there, twenty, twenty, because apparently there's been some people already signed that way, and then somebody signed, put like thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, eighteen behind it, could, could cause a problem in a, in a document. So, I know myself now, I've started filling up everything, making sure it's twenty, twenty, so you might wanna think about that. And just echo on what Jim did, said Chairman Woodruff's gonna give a state of the county on the fifteenth, and it's at eight AM in Captain George's, and there is a fee of ten dollars, and you need to pre-register, and you can do that on their website. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Leo. Matt? If, if there's no further business, I, do you have any, thank you, Ed, Ed, thank you. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
A record.